Okay, I would like to call the regular meeting of the planning commission to order at 6:07 PM. Item number two is the pledge of allegiance. Everybody could, I know it's difficult with the lag of communications with the Zoom meeting, but as best as we can, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And next item is a roll call, please.
Chair Arnold.
Yes.
There you go. Commissioner Rounds? Commissioner Rounds?
I'm here.
No worries. Commissioner Hernandez? I see Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Carvajal?
Here.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Here.
Chair Arnold?
Here.
All in attendance, we have a question.
Okay, next item is ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Does any one of the commissioners have anything to reveal regarding ex parte communications about the public hearings? Ms. Carvajal?
None, Chairperson.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Negative.
Commissioner Rounds?
None, sir.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
None, sir.
And I don't have either. So next item is public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raised hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The planning secretary will see if you have your raised hand through the Zoom application. You have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Chair Arnold, I do. I have Herman Alejandro Hutham.
Do you want to wait till we open up the public hearing on that item before you speak, sir? Or do you want to speak now?
Isn't this the portion for comments that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, that's the thing is written, it says it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. So I, that's why I read it that way. So this, this is only for items that are not on the agenda now?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just, I thought that's what I read, but I could be wrong. I don't have my glasses on.
Under item five, oral communications, it says not on today's agenda.
Not on the, okay, so there must have been a typo on, on my copy. All right, so if it's not, if it's, the public comments now open would be only for items that are not on the agenda. Are there any people wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
This is Herman Alejandro. We'd like to speak on items on the agenda, just to clarify, specifically the Malia Home Projects.
We'll just wait for you on that item then. Planning Secretary, do we have any other members that wish to speak on anything not on the agenda?
At this time, Commissioner, excuse me, no, I don't have any raised hands at this point in time.
Okay, so let's now close the public comment and move on to the next item. Item number six for the minutes, is there a motion as second for approval of the minutes?
Commissioner Carvajal, I move.
Motion second?
Commissioner Hernandez?
That's fine, Bill. Bill, clap it.
Either one.
Either one, doesn't matter.
Okay, so we'll just give it to Bill. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Item number seven is a public hearing, continued from the November 8 meeting of the planning commission for the CEQA adoption of mitigated negative declaration, the general plan amendment GPA case number 31, the zone change case number 140, tentative tract map number 83383, development plan approval, DPA case number 982, and a modification permit, case number 1340. GPA case number 31, a request to amend the general plan land use designation of an existing parcel from public facilities to multifamily residential. I'd like to call upon Director of Planning Wade Morrell to please present item number seven.
Paul, could you give me host ability, please?
When you're, you're showing up as co-host, so you should have the ability to
Okay.
use your screen.
Don't know why there are two. Sorry, this is the wrong one. Okay, good afternoon. Honorable We can't see the presentation. Audience. This is the Malia Home Townhome Development, and as indicated by the chairperson, there are quite a number of entitlements, a general plan, zone change, tract map, development plan approval and modification permit.
And you need to share your screen.
I cannot see my screen. Is that better?
I see it.
Okay, excellent. So before, before I start, I would like to say that we did receive a letter today after the 12 noon date, the letter requested that the comments be forwarded to the planning commission, city council. We have done that. So to be clear, we did receive, I think it was an eight to 10 page letter that essentially rewrote some of the conditions of approval. Staff has gone through all that was presented, and we do agree with one item, item number 18, in that there is no need, it said a traffic report was required. It's already been done, so that has already been fulfilled. Just want to make everybody aware of that. Okay, this is the property. It is at 11733 Florence Avenue. On the north side of Florence Avenue, it's approximately three acres. The current zone in is PF, public facilities. It's developed with a single building, about 16,000 square feet. And the Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints had occupied this building. It's been unoccupied maybe for about three years now. To be just by reference, to the east, there's another church, Krista de Felion Church. Just north of it, there's multi-tenant buildings, two 10-unit condominium development. To the south is multi-tenant development. And to the west are 19 single-family dwelling. At the time, that was the largest low to moderate income housing that the city contracted to build. Since that time, we've not done such a huge, a huge project, but those were all built by the city and made available for first-time home buyers, low to moderate income through the city's lottery program. Malia Home, they're proposing to develop a 54-unit condominium development on the three-acre property. As mentioned previously, there are five entitlements required, general plan, zone change, tract map, development plan approval, and a modification permit. As is customary for all public hearing, everyone was notified within a 500-foot radius. August the 12th, a notice was posted in City Hall, the Santa Fe Springs Library, and in the Whittier Daily News. You may think these days, these dates are rather odd because the meeting is today. Keep in mind, this has been continued several times. And because this was continued, there really wasn't a need to notify everyone again within a 500-foot radius, nor publish in a newspaper. So what you are seeing on the screen pertains to, to when this was scheduled to go before you in September. In terms of outreach, when this project first came before us, knowing that there were residential to the west, staff advised the developer to meet with all the adjacent property owner and advise them of the project. We know because of emails and correspondence that the developer did reach out to all the individuals within a 500-foot radius by mail and email to get those individuals together to discuss the project. And again, from the onset, staff advised this, and the developer did reach out to all the 19 homes, everyone within a 500-foot radius. And there was also a petition. When you look through your package, you will see that's a petition of quite a number of signatures. The developer did reach out to everyone in that petition that had an address and a name. And also in October, there was a community meeting that was held at the site in order to listen to the community concern. And unfortunately, there was only one resident that showed up at that meeting. It was an opportunity for everyone to be aware of the project, see what it was about, and raise concern. One of the things that the one resident that showed up realized, which she did not know before, was that the property is not gated. If you were to look at the posts on social media, Instagram, it still states that the property is gated, and the property was never gated from the onset, nor is it proposed to be gated. So that was a misconception, and on social media, it still states that it is gated. Here's the zoning and land use. So to the north is the park, public use facility, open space. To the south is also public facility, multifamily apartments. To the east, of course, is the church. And to the west, you have single-family dwellings. In terms of the general plan amendment, the proposal before you is to change the existing zone from public use facility to art-free PD, multiple-family residential. And again, public use to multifamily. The zone change is to change it from PF, which is public facility, to art-free PD, which would be, as you can tell by the the right, it would be consistent with the art-free to the east of the subject parcel. There's also a tract map that is proposed, and all what the tract map does, it creates 54 condominium units. That's all that it does, and what you should know is that this currency says 54 units. The original proposal was for 63 units. But after listening to, to some of the input and some of the comments that were made at the planning commission meeting, city council meeting, letters that were sent either to staff or council, the number of units would change to 54 units, and the number of parking spaces will increase from 22 to 34 units. So again, the developer listened to, to the comments, listened to the community, and modified the project as such. The development plan approval, of course, is for a new 54-unit townhome development consisting of 11 buildings. And each of the building will have three to seven condominium units. And just to show you that what is proposed is not unusual, and I believe one of the speaker mentioned earlier that yes, this is, is prime property, and that speaker is absolutely correct. But it is prime property for multifamily development, unless you go to maybe the inland empire or someplace that has a lot of land that's available. Most of what you would find being built right now are multifamily. And this is indicative of that, whether it is La Marada, Buena Park, Los Salamitos, Costa Mesa, Whittier. As you can see, most of what is being built right now are three-story townhomes, all two-story townhomes, but certainly not single-family dwellings. And just as, I guess, a comment, if you were to look at just Google a single-family dead, you will find that for a lot of cities, single-family is dead, quote-unquote. And some cities such as, I believe it's Seattle, they're actually changing their codes to not allow for a single-family dwelling. So the era of having your single-family dwelling with your white picket fence and your front yard, for the most part, that's, that's dead. Or again, unless you go in the inland empire or some location where there's a lot of land, and you could build that. For example, we did some of that at the villages, but even that development, which was 54.5 acres, it was a mixture of single-family dwelling and multifamily development. There is a modification permit that is proposed, and that modification permit is to allow a block wall within the front yard setback area. And it's mainly a means of security for the residents, and there will be an entry gate, but not a, a car gate. So someone with a car will have easily access onto the facility. Again, to reiterate, it is not a gated community, and the wall that's proposed is in line or further back than the existing wall that, excuse me, that the city built when we contracted to have those 19 homes constructed. Again, 11 buildings will provide a total of 54 new market rate residential units. Initially, there was concern that the units would be affordable unit, and the assumption was made that when it was thought that it would be affordable or even rental unit, that somehow because it's a rental unit, there's a disparity between someone's that, that rents in terms of their socioeconomic status and someone that owns a home. So that was one of the comments that were received early on when people were not precisely aware of whether or not those units would be market rate or rental units. So the front yard, according to the code, should be 15 feet. They are providing 20 feet, so 15 feet more than what is required. The code requires five feet. 26 feet is provided, and 38 for most of the buildings. A total of 27,000 square feet of open space would be provided, and in one of the, the comments that came in, it was mentioned that we should condition the project to adhere to the Quinbi Act. But that is absolutely and very misleading because the city does not have the Quinbi Act provision. You would actually need to have an ordinance in place that would enable you to have the developer set aside a certain number of open space as part of the development. And even without that in place, the developer is still proposing 27,800 square feet of common open space. And you will see that better as we go through the presentation. Here's a major concession on the behalf of the developer. Initially, the buildings, hopefully everyone can see my pointer, the buildings adjacent to the residential units to the west, they were all three-story buildings, and they were concerned by some of the residents of privacy issue. CEQA is not a privacy issue act. So that was neither here nor there. But if you were to look at what is existing out there right now, there is no privacy between the 19 single-family dwellings to the west. Anyone can look from the second story to the other person's side yard. So there's no privacy at this point. Notwithstanding, the developer, again, major concession, change the three-story buildings to two stories. So these entire units that I'm showing, those went from three stories to two stories, and they will be located a minimum of 38 feet, at least this building, from the wall that separates the single-family dwelling from the proposed units. And again, this is from the wall, not to somebody's backyard. And this 38 feet is for this building. If you were to look at the building to the north, which is also the first unit, second story, it's 50 feet. So a 50-foot distance from the property line to the nearest building. And when you look at the building along Florence Avenue, it's at least 68 feet. So in terms of privacy and people in the three-story looking into the neighbors' backyard, their bedrooms, that has been addressed, not only with the developer making those units two stories, but within the easement area to the west, the developer will plant trees, and those trees, once they are planted, the minimum height of those trees will be 14 feet tall. And again, all of these buildings are two-story buildings. As mentioned, also the initial supplemental of the 63 units has now been changed to 54. And you could see with that change, what the difference is between what was proposed now, what is proposed now, and what was previously proposed. Obviously, a big difference. 38 feet, previously proposed 36 feet. Some of the setbacks are the same, but there are nine units less, but 14 additional stalls. And it should be noted that our code requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and they do meet that requirement. And I know the, I guess, the comeback to that is, well, we know that people use their garages for the storage of of items, and nobody uses the garage that way anymore, and that you now have large families who have more than one cars, and that's absolutely true. So the thinking is, at least you would gather from that, the thinking is to, well, why not change a municipal code to allow, instead of two parking car, two cars, excuse me, two covered parking per dwelling unit? Why not have four? And I understand that logic totally, but there's also the other side of that. Just like when you expand the freeway, cars always seem to to fulfill that new lane that is created. You have a four-car garage, it'll be filled with also with also storage. But notwithstanding, it is something that the city is going to look at in terms of changing our code to require more parking spaces per dwelling unit and codifying guest parking spaces because right now the code does not say X number for each total number of dwelling units. You have to have a certain number of guest parking. The code absolutely does not say that right now. But the developer is proposing thirty-four visitors' guest parking. This just illustrates the landscaping that there will be trees planted along the periphery of the site. And again, the trees that will be planted, especially on the western side at installation, they will be fourteen feet tall. So again, addressing the issue of privacy, not only privacy, but also noise, which is something to be considered. So this tells you what the various full plans are. And there is a flow plan that, and it's plan four, three stories that has three bedroom and a den. And that then can be converted into an optional four-bedroom. This just shows the various flow plans. Just so that you have an understanding. As the flow plan, free flow, flow plan five. The elevations that were submitted for the development. It is contemporary in design. There is fenestration. There's low-profile roofs, various roof plane and angles, color color variation, stone veneer, decorative metal on end, stucco in different tones. So it definitely is contemporary. It is a please, it is very architecturally pleasing. It's not your cut cookie-type elevation. The developer took care, the architect took care in designing. The buildings and staff also ensured that we will get something that is contemporary and certainly pleasing to the eye. Similarly, to the adjacent single-family dwelling to the west, for the two-story buildings, the height will be twenty-three feet six inches. Again, consistent with the two-story buildings to the west. And here's what that will look like. So here's the single-family dwelling to the west. And this is part of the nineteen units for the single-family development. This building will be at a minimum twenty-six feet from the single-family dwelling and at least for the first unit, it will be two stories. Similar to what is proposed to to the west. And if my memory is correct, for a two-story building, the maximum you're allowed, I think it's twenty-five feet. So this will actually going to be a little less than that. So again, that's a major compromise that was undertaken by the developer. Again, more elevations where you see that the first units will have a lower profile. There will be two stories consistent to the buildings to the west. Same with the building just south of what was shown. But this building, although it is the first unit, are two-story. Keep in mind, not only are the first, is the first unit single-story, but it is also set back more than fifty. Again, five zero, fifty feet from the wall or the property line for the single-family dwellings to the west. For the larger building, all of the units, emphasis on all, A L L, all of the units will be two-story units consistent with the single-family dwellings to the west. And again, distance between them at least thirty-eight feet. So not only are the buildings two-story, but there will be thirty-eight feet from the closest single-family dwelling to the west. And the buildings to the to the northeast, those are three-story buildings. And these are also three-story buildings. But again, there will be trees planted along the easterly property line, similarly to what is being planted on the west. Again, I mentioned this before, but I think it's very important that the planning commission note that the development as proposed provides the number of parking spaces that's required by code, by law. It does provide the required number of parking spaces. And that's all that we can rely upon. Does it adhere to the code or does it not adhere to the code? We can, we cannot speculate as to how people will use their garages. You can only act on whether or not it meets the code, whether or not it meets the requirements. Because ultimately, what would prevail is whether or not the code is being met. And certainly, the code is being met. And beyond that, there will be thirty-four, again, additional guest stalls, which they are not required to provide. Yes, it is a very nice amenity and we're very much appreciative of it. It really makes a difference, but we could not compel the developer to provide those parking spaces because the code did not require it. But we worked with the developer and they were able to provide those parking spaces because they wanted to address the parking concern of the residents. There is a an existing C M U wall that will be constructed along the westerly property line. No, they will utilize the existing wall along the the westerly property line. But a new wall and its C M U will be constructed along the north property line and the westerly property line. And there is currently an opening in the fence. So someone can essentially walk from the proposed development into the field or vice versa. Granted, it is trespassing, but that issue will be resolved with the wall you want replacing that over there. And of course, you have the six-foot-high wall that's proposed within the setback requirements along along Florence Avenue. And again, it acts as, it's a safety issue. It serves to buffer some of the noise, noise attenuation. And it isn't any different than the block wall that the city constructed, also within the setback requirement. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, one environmental document was prepared for the project. It was an initial study mitigated negative deck. And it was prepared by E P D Solution along with a traffic analysis. E P D is at this meeting with us. And so is our traffic engineer, Tom Lopez. So if there are traffic-related issue or environmental issues, then unless I'm unable to answer those, unable to answer it in a manner that's satisfactory for the planning commission, then certainly they are available to answer those questions. There was a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And that has all of the mitigation measure and who is responsible for making sure that those mitigation measures are addressed. We did receive free comment letters and an additional comment letter after the review period. But again, for us as staff, yes, we can say that, you know what? The review period said that you had twenty days or thirty days of what the requirement is. And after that, we will not accept any comments. But we did not do that. We did accept comments that came in after the fact. But there was a letter that came in. It was actually an eight-page letter. And it pointed out to some of the impacts that the proposed project would have on with respect to CEQA. It is attachment five four-one in your package. And I just want you to look at it closely because I already have about seventy-five slides as part of this presentation. And obviously, I don't want to go through all of the responses that came in. They are in your, in your package. And I hope everybody looked at it because they are succinct. And they are to the point. And they essentially addresses all of the issues that were brought up. So one of the issue that were brought, that was brought up is about the project's impact on the privacy of existing residential users. And as you can see from the response, privacy concerns do not qualify as a CEQA issue at all. And such a limited impact is not significant as the term is defined in CEQA, and it gives case law to substantiate that. And also, the M and D was not required. Again, emphasis on not required to address the privacy concern of the adjacent neighbors. Okay, but the M and D did address it. Okay, and I've mentioned some of it before. The setback, how far the buildings will be from the adjacent single-family dwelling. The fact that there's a whole row of buildings that will be two stories consistent with the single-family to the west. There's additional trees that are required. And again, at fourteen feet on onset. So all of those issues have been addressed. And we feel that in terms of the privacy issue that came up, it's a non-issue and that we've more than adequately addressed it. And this is a view within the development itself. And as you can see, this and when I said within the development, this is within the single-family dwelling to the to the west. And as you can see, there's no privacy from one neighbor to the other. So this neighbor on the, on the second floor could look directly into the side yard and to the room of the other neighbor. And that was just for a frame of reference. But again, even without showing this, we have the setback requirements. We have the two-story units. We have the landscaping. Those will all address privacy issues. Although we didn't really need to address it, but we did. There was also a comment that the proposed development violated goal number one of the land use element, which states that the city should preserve the single-family nature of the community. This project does not remove, obliterate or in any way takes away from the single-family nature of the community. What would be taken away from the single-family nature of the community was if we were to to, let's say, for some reason, all of the homes were for sale within that residential development. Well, not let me, I, I won't even go there. What would take away from the single-family nature of the residential development would be if single-family dwellings were being turned into multiple-family dwelling. That would take away from from preserving the single-family nature of the community. And that is exactly what S B nine would do when you have your A D U's and your junior A D U's. But certainly, what is proposed does not anyway endanger the single-family nature of the community. Also, if you look at the goals, the goals of the existing general plan clearly state The goals of the existing general plan clearly states. That it promotes a greater variety of housing type, sizes and cost. Is encouraged, including condominium and multifamily dwellings. At density not greater than five dwelling units. For gross acre. And that is exactly what this project is doing. What everyone needs to understand is that not everyone. Can afford a single family dwelling. People want townhomes, condominiums. Because A, a lot of time, it's not as costly as. A single family dwelling. They do not want any type of of maintenance. Condominium, townhomes, they have common areas. Teams, townhomes, etc. And people at times like that. Feeling of the close knit community when you live in next door. To somebody, essentially you share a wall with that person. And I think that's important to understand and. One of the goal of the city of the general plan, it does. It does promote not only single family dwelling, but multifamily dwelling also. Also. Just if you were to. If you went out and looked at the property today. Prior to coming to this meeting. You would clearly see that south of the proposed. Townhome development. It's multifamily dwelling. There's the Santa Fe Apartments. And to the east. There's the townhomes, ten units each. And to the south. West, you have the Villa Santa Fe Apartments. If it's anything. The nineteen unit single family dwelling, there seem to be an anomaly. More so than than what is what is proposed. So staff would say that. The project is neither out of place. Nor does it introduce some type of. Novel interface between the two different types of dwelling units. It is completely consistent with the general plan land use and housing element. And I believe Jose mentioned previously that. We do have nine hundred and fifty-two. Units or regional housing needs assessment. And some of these units will fill our Reno. Numbers for the above. Average income. So it does help with our Reno also. There's also an argument that the project would divide the community. By replacing the public facility use. With a sixty-three unit townhome development. And again, it's been changed to to fifty-four unit. But. To physically divide a community. You would need to, as the wording implies. Physically put up a barrier. That separates one part of an established community from the rest. This project obviously does not do anything of that nature. There's no construction of walls or roads. That will essentially separate or cordon off one neighborhood. From another neighborhood. It will simply. Replace an existing church structure with townhomes. That is precisely what it is going to do. Well, then someone can say, well. It's replacing a church. That's an amenity that. The city needs. And it's something that we should have more of. Well, in reality, the church hasn't been operating for several years now. The church is the one that wants to sell the property, wants to have it developed. And there's a church use to the east. There's a church use to the south. There's a church use further along at Norwalk and. Florence Avenue on the northeast side. And there's a church use on Onde and Florence Avenue. And if you want to go outside of the city a little bit, that's a church use at Lakeland Road. Just south of. Excuse me, on Pioneer, just south of of Lakeland Road. So there is absolutely. No basis, no evidence, there's no legal authority. That substantiates. The allegation that the project physically divides an established neighborhood. Again, there is no supporting evidence. Citation or legal authority. To support this allegation. And again, I just pointed out a couple. Hopefully you've looked through. That section and looked at the letter that was sent in. And the response because again, the response were very. To the point. And essentially. Doesn't, the response were were to the point. Now, we did receive other letters from the County of Los Angeles. Our fire department. But. It just stated that the site is not within their response area. And I know in one of the letters that was sent in. To the planning commission, staff, city council. States that the trees that are. Located along the periphery. That they are being removed and they are heritage trees. That is absolutely unequivocally incorrect. They are not heritage trees, they are not oak trees, they are not. Rare or endangered endangered species. I think it's very important that when. All of us get information. And it's just something that is stated and appears to be fact. We really look at it at face value. And do the research to determine whether or not. That is indeed the case because again, if you were to go to social media now. It still states that the project is a gated. We also got. Letters from the county sanitation district. But again, the project will connect to an existing twenty seven inch sewer line on Florence Avenue. And obtain the required permit. And pay the sanitation fee. Again, there was reference made in some of the letter from the residence at Lake Center. Park Lane. About consistency with general plan and zoning. I've already went over that, but I'll go over it a little bit more. There's. There's wording that says. The project does not meet the setback requirement. Again, that is incorrect. It exceeds it. In most cases. The project does include two garages. For each dwelling unit. And actually thirty-four parking spaces. And with respect to noise. That is. Is governed by the cities. We already have. Have items in place for that. Wow, it's already some minutes to seven. Okay, I'll. I'll try to think this. Okay, again, some comments states that. We didn't take into consideration sensitive receptors. That is incorrect. There was a construction noise analysis. That was done and it does show that the. The closest sensitive receptors is anticipated to be not less than eighty D B A. Threshold. And that the noise is temporary in nature. And there is an open space component to this. And in terms of the traffic. And our traffic engineer can. Can attest to this, but essentially there was a comment that came in that. The city did not do enough traffic analysis. We took that into consideration. We did go out and do additional traffic analysis and. Essentially, some level of services would change. But not change to a level where it would be an F. Level or way the. The weight would be significant. Again, with respect to noise. The ten foot high wall is supposed to attenuate noise. Not only for the residential use adjacent to it, but the residential use. That is proposed and there are just. Already rules and regulation in place. Not only with respect to to the city's code, but also AQ and V. With noise, dust, that's already in place. Already mentioned this about the heritage trees. So again, I will not repeat myself there. On-site parking. I'm not going to repeat myself. I think I made it clear that this fulfill the requirement. Gated community. We already talked about that. On-site spaces. Already spoke about that. Traffic, traffic and collision issue. Again, it is not what would be. More than what would be expected along a street. Such as as Florence Avenue. And that goes for collision report and accident reports. Also, and what people have to consider. Yes, with the proposed project, there will be more. Cars on Florence Avenue. But that would be the same of any type of development. That's proposed adjacent to a street. There will be increased traffic, but. Increased traffic. Would lead to, you would think just logically, that if you have more people driving. Then there's a probability for more accidents to occur. That's just. That's just common sense. And if someone wants to question the tree story. That it does not match some of the most recent projects that we've approved. You can see that that is incorrect. Here's El Borgo and storm properties. And their three stories. But again, the developer did concede and had some two-story design. Spoke about the wall up front. This is what the proposed wall will look like. And again, no gate that is proposed and there's no condition. That states that the applicant. Shall in the future not be required to install a gate. At this location. Every. Proposed changes to the project have to come before staff. And staff has full. Review and authority to approve and not approve. Any changes to the future. So it's not necessary to condition that. That. Again, this just shows that we've approved similar modification requests in the past. In terms of. Whether or not the proposed zone change meet the minimum standards in the R three zone. Yes, it does. The minimum lot size is seventy-five hundred. This is one hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet. Minimum lot width sixty feet, three hundred and fifteen feet. One hundred and twenty-five feet for the minimum lot depth, four hundred and sixteen feet is proposed. And again. There are. Townhomes, multiple family dwelling to the northeast. There are apartments to the south. So those are multiple family dwelling and to the southwest. There are multiple family dwelling and if you want to look at just. Residential in general. The proposed. Project will be residential, so it will blend in with the residential. To the west and to the southwest. When you look at the decision that you're making today. It has to be made on whether or not. What is before you satisfy these requirements. And one of them is whether or not there's a need in the community. For more of these types of uses. And as already explained, yes, there is. We need a variety of housing types. And the general plan does promote that. And even when it comes to SCADs. Population, housing and employment forecast. You can see. Twenty nineteen. Population. Seventeen thousand, twenty thirty-five, thirty thousand. Increase in housing unit, increase in employment. So certainly. When you consider this fine end, you would see that, yes, indeed, it does meet it. Another is whether or not the proposed zone is more suitable for the uses permitted. Yes, the church has not been utilized for many years. It is. Residential consistent with the residential to the northeast. And this is always a question. That the change of zone will not be detrimental to any person's or property in the surrounding area. No, it will not be detrimental. So you're addressing the housing shortage by adding fifty-four. Not sixty-three condominium. Not sixty three condominium units. You're expanding. The economic variety of housing type in the city. You're promoting job. Balance by locating housing in proximity to employment center. Freeway access. There's high design landscaping. Market rate condominium plus. Keep in mind, the school district will benefit, the Little Lake School District. Will benefit from this because currently. The church does not. Does not pay any type of property tax. And this, once it becomes. Private, there will be property tax that is paid. Plus, the school district will get. The last time I checked was in twenty nineteen. I don't have the most latest. But Little Lake School District will get approximately. Four dollars time the. Growth square footage in terms of school fees. The master plan of the city is the general plan. And. The proposed use. Because it is, we change in the general plan to be consistent with. The land use. Yes, it will be consistent with both. Okay, let me go through this real quickly. Okay, again, already talked about the positive impact. Do not need to go through this again. So again, by changing both. From P F to R three P D. By changing both the general plan. Land use and zoning. There will be consistency. The project is suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning. Because it will be changed to residential. There's a need for residential. In the community. And again. And I do not want to go through. All of the land use consistency. That's outlined in the staff report. Hopefully you've read through all of them and you see how the project. Does some. Does adhere to. The city's general plan. Goals and policies. Track map. Same thing. Development plan approval. I've already explained why. It is in conformance with the code. Why it is appropriate for multiple family. Dwelling. And we have given. Attention to landscaping, fencing. And other. Other elements. So I do hope that you get, and I know it was rather long and I had not meant to. To make it that long, but I thought it was very, very important. That you saw that. Staff. Has to look at what is proposed. Look at. What. The requirements are. And essentially. Make a determine, a determination. Does the pass the map, general plan amendment, zone change. Development plan approval. Do they meet the findings and clearly. They do. And staff is recommending that. The planning commission. Approve and adopt. The proposed environmental document. And incorporate the planning commission findings. And action regarding this matter. And recommend, of course, that the city council. Adopt all that is proposed. Proposed before you. And that concludes. My presentation. I know that the applicant. Also has a presentation that. He would like to do and at this point, I do not know if there's any questions. By the planning commission. For me at this point.
Okay, uh, thank you, Wayne. I appreciate your presentation. Is there any questions regarding the planning directors? Presentation by the commissioners? Anybody have any questions on this item at this time?
I have a question. This is Vice Chair Jimenez.
Yes.
And this might go to. Katia. I'm, I have a question regarding, because Wayne said it is. It's a. Not profitable, but for Little Lake City School District, it will. How should I say it?
You will get school fees because the school fees is based on there's a certain. Multiplier. The last time I looked at it, it was about three dollars and sixty eight cents. Times the square footage, but I showed that has increased. Because what I found was. Nineteen from twenty nineteen. Because the idea is that. There will be people there that have kids. And they will need to use the school and they should pay their fair share.
Okay, so my question is, would I have to recuse myself because I'm on the Little Lake City School Board? Katia. From voting.
You know. If we can take maybe a moment, just take a break to go ahead and, um, as I can address your, your question.
Okay.
Okay.
Does any other commissioner have any other questions? Bill?
No questions, sir.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Very impressive. No questions at this time.
Ms. Carvajal?
No questions at this time, Jefferson.
And I don't have any questions at this time, so. Uh, do we want to go ahead and continue while Katia is looking into that question from. Commissioner. Jimenez regarding his question. Should we go ahead and have the applicant go ahead and make his presentation?
I would suggest that we do so while Katia looks. Goes to answer the presentation, the question.
Okay, so. Yeah, it looks like the applicant has. Control of the, uh, the. The board, so, uh, sir, if you would go ahead and make your presentation, the applicant.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman Arnold. My name is Chad Brown. I'm with Malia Holmes. Just to confirm that everybody can hear me okay and on the screen. You should see just a simple aspire D P A nine eighty two Malia Holmes perspective. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And fantastic, fantastic. Well, Happy New Year to everyone to start with. Thank you for, for taking the time this evening. And I do want to thank staff for the very thorough report. And I'll try not to duplicate a lot of that that was emphasized by staff. But there are a few very important points that I would like to, to point out. Obviously, this. There we go. We designed this project with a lot of guidance. Research and input from the planning staff very early on. With respect to protecting those, uh, those existing homes on the west. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about the initially proposed project, but that one. We had landscaping, we had setback, we had different things that were involved in that. But it was really, uh, there have been some, uh, some vocal neighbors and residents. That have been voicing opposition to this project. Unfortunately, it's indirectly to us as opposed to direct conversations. But we went, but with that, we've heard what those concerns are, so we wanted to address those. But very early on, you know, the, the church has been vacant for quite some time. We heard directions from staff as to how and what if we were to redevelop this site into residential. What might be appropriate, what might be acceptable? And we took that guidance and that's what we laid out. We also did a community outreach program as staff had touched on. But unfortunately, we did not hear any response directly from any, anybody that we reached out to. For a constructive meeting and dialogue. We tried to. Force is the wrong word, but facilitate. A community meeting in October that we, uh, that we offered. And unfortunately, only as, as staff again touched on, we only had one neighbor show up. To discuss her concerns were about trash enclosures. And the fact that we didn't have a trash enclosure, we were being served through trash services, just like any other single family home would be. And she was concerned that that was adjacent to the shared property line, which it was not. But we understand the main concerns on this project were parking, privacy, the density, traffic and noise. So I think is what I would like to do. Is to point out some of the, the, the main modifications that we made to this. To our project. In response and has formally been resubmitted and is a party to the staff report that you've been presented tonight. In response to those concerns. We formally modified our site plan to reduce it from sixty three down to fifty four units, as staff has touched on. The parking we heard was of, of great concern, even though we exceeded the code. Requirements to begin with. While we reduced the unit count from fifty four. Our, from sixty three to fifty four, we increased the parking from twenty two open surface stalls to thirty four open surface stalls. For fifty four units. This is, that's in addition to the two car garages for each of it. So again, we officially modified our application. You have a sequo memo from the city staff consultant. Analyzing the sequo document for the change that had been made to the project proposal. And if I can jump right into some of the, some of the things that Wayne had touched on, but I just want to highlight a few. We have. Within, within the community, it is a Paseo oriented type of community, meaning that all the front doors for these units would open on to an internal Paseo. With walkways and pedestrian connections throughout. The, the community internal to it. We have incorporated a recreation area that would have a turf play area together with a tot lot as well as a covered. A covered patio area with picnic tables, barbecues, trash cans. The typical, the typical things for a community gathering area of this size. And then, of course, the frontage landscaping, we have the. A meandering sidewalk that the city engineering staff is requiring to be incorporated into it. The highlights of the modifications are what you see now in front of you. We modified to eliminate any three-story elements adjacent to the single family homes on the west. So what you see in yellow is highlighted are only the two-story townhomes and staff touched on this. The area along the west is a ten-foot wide landscape planter, not a three or five foot wide, but ten foot wide, so that we can get some wider canopy trees. To grow in that area in a ten-foot planter. And then, uh, rather than the minimum setbacks, we have dramatically increased the setbacks and offsets from those single family homes to our west. The two-story and the landscaping address the, uh, the privacy issue from any matter. The townhomes live and look like they would be a single family two-story home. Elevation wise, we've integrated that two-story element into the elevations. Where they occur at end caps on the buildings. And the bottom front elevation that you see is that of the two-story building that is the. Alonggated building that's the primary area adjacent to the single family. It is only a two-story building. If I may go back up and it's important to look on the three-story elements where the two-story end caps are placed. There are not any windows on those end cap or the, the third story elements that would be facing towards the west. The typical three-story elevations, which are the internal or the eastern portion of the site. Our material board and, uh, and coloring. We would have two different elements or two different color. Schemes. So to say, all of them incorporate a stone veneer, all of them incorporate the, the. The, the fascia, the accent, the multi-stucco colors, all would be comprehensive and. Matching which each, with each other complimentary. From a perspective standpoint, from the frontage of Florence Avenue. You can see the frontage with the landscape improvements we would be getting, and this is a view down that driveway edge with the landscape and the interface between. Our westerly edge and the existing single family homes on the west. Here's just a multi-perspective of the Paseo interiors. A little bit closer up of that two-story building that's on the west edge. And if I can touch on the parking in a little bit of a different way than what Wayne did. One of the things that is in, that you're going to see encouraged through all of the recent state legislation reg, uh, regulations. That are coming out regarding housing is the placement. Of housing adjacent to mass transit and transit district lines. Within a hundred and fifty feet of this, there are. Both stops for Norwalk Transit and the MetroLink service. Via the bus to get direct access to the, uh, to the, the rail lines. Which I think is very important for the placement of a, of a higher density housing like a eighteen units to the acre is what we're proposing here. So on the bottom right of this screen is showing the locations of the transit stops that are directly outside of, of the proposed, that exists today. That are directly outside along Florence Avenue. And then the larger site plan is showing the distribution of the open parking spaces that are provided. The thirty four open parking spaces that are provided for the, for the revised modified project. We were able to incorporate these parking spaces, additional spaces, obviously by, by eliminating units. So we had a nine-unit reduction down to our fifty four. I was made aware of recent areas in the city where there have been concerns about. The parking and overflow parking out of newer residential and some older residential multifamily. Communities in the city. This are, these are areas directly, uh, basically proximate to around city hall. But as we drive or, or, or walk around through all of these. This ninety seven hundred Jersey, which is a rather large complex. Is a hundred units approximately and there's only twenty one open parking spaces. Villa Verde, which is again, an older one, thirty two units with ten. The Il Borgo townhomes, which are relatively new, fifty units with sixteen open parking spaces. Promenade Drive fifty three with twenty nine. We're getting a little closer to where we were, a little over two and a half parking spaces. Per, per home. Then Aspen Meadows is back down below. Again, there's seventy six units with twenty seven open parking spaces. Our proposed project that I just showed you is fifty four units with thirty four open parking spaces. Or a parking ratio of over two and a half. Spaces per unit. Staff again touched on the compatibility aspects of this. We know that Santa Fe Springs has somewhat of a residential core and there is a large industrial and commercial aspect to it. We think that the placement of this existing church and the adjacent multifamily homes. That are to the east and across Florence Avenue, the apartments there. That we find ourselves in that same situation, kind of on the edge of your single family core. And appropriately placed for this. Matching density of those existing multifamily. and appropriately placed for this matching density of those existing multifamily homes. The recording stopped. Okay, recording back, am I still live?
Yeah, you're still live.
Okay, thank you. So from a compatibility standpoint, we tried to incorporate a lot of initial design for protection for those homeowners to our west. Staff touched on the, what this project would be able to provide for the needed up to nine hundred and fifty-two housings that the city needs to provide land for in the next housing cycle. And I'm not going to want to, you know, delve in on your general plan process with the exception of what I will mention after this slide. So this is a slide that's indicating the noise contours and primarily the noise contours that are experienced in this particular area with relationship to the train, the rail trains that run through and specifically the horn noise that happens multi-times daily. While the proposed project will have interior built-in mitigations through current construction practices, thicker walls, dual pane windows. The, the MND does require some protection of our balconies through having partial sound barriers included on, on our Plan Three plans in this area. The existing single-family houses to the west of us should benefit from a noise standpoint by the physical barrier of this proposed project interceding between them and the noise source. I just, I, I point that out as a potential benefit and a positive light that hopefully those residents might be able to, to see through this. And lastly, I point out that this project is in compliance and it complies with where the city has been studying the land use through your general plan land use update of what the appropriate land use for this site and sites like it would be. We are not proposing this because of that. And I, I also believe that the city is not proposing the land use on it because of our project. I believe that it is good planning and design for underutilized parcels in the city to have the ability to not only meet the state's mandates that they are forcing down on local jurisdictions, but to have that mix of housing opportunities in the city, and I think it's appropriate to have that mix. And in closing, responses to concerns that the community has expressed is addressed in multiple methods through project design. The increased respective building setbacks and the introduction of the two-story product under the community edge we utilized along that western interface with the single-family homes addresses the privacy concerns. The decrease in project density by nine units is, is significant. And the increase in off-street parking with a hundred and forty-two off-street parking spaces for the fifty-four units should help address the concerns that the community and the neighbors may feel with regard to parking. I think there's also conditions of approval that have been recommended that require and would mandate that the garages not be able to be used for storage, but would be able, would be only able to be used for parking of vehicles only and that the HOA and that the city may have a, an inspection capability with that to enforce that. This project has more available parking proposed in comparison to other developments in the city, new and old. And additionally, new for-sale homes will help the overall property, community property values overall. There's been a traffic study, including recent accident data provided by professional staff that has been evaluated and found that this proposed project will not have a major impact on existing traffic issues. In fact, the project is required to add a raised median in Florence Avenue to restrict cross-traffic movements from this project and to help improve the overall situation of traffic flow in the area locally. And I must say, if not this residential development, another will undoubtedly be proposed. And the next group of Malia Homes may not be as responsive to community concerns and the compatibility issues with the adjacent homes. Setbacks can be less than what we are proposing. It could be a, a for-rent project, it could be a for, an affordable housing apartment project that could come forward with little or, or very little control being afforded to the city from a discretionary standpoint with, with aspects such as parking. This proposal by Malia Homes is a responsive development that is well-designed and will be an asset to the city's housing needs. And I, I, I urge you to trust your staff. They are the professionals. They have recommended a very positive element of this project. And without having leadership and confidence in city staff and their guidance, it's very difficult for investment to be made into cities, into, into a city or a city government if staff says one, but leaders and directors and commissioners lead another way. I'm asking you to please approve this project. We've been through several delays. We've been very responsive to staff and to the community. And this project is good for the city. It's good for the city overall from the additional aspects of new housing and investment. Yes, it's also good for Malia Homes, but our goals, the city and Malia Homes should generally be aligned. And that is to provide opportunities for quality housing, so multiple more families like your own can be started here, grow up here, go to the schools here and learn to love the city much like you do. Thank you. Myself and our attorney are available to answer any questions that you may have, and I appreciate your time and attention on this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I really appreciate your, your presentation and answering the, the questions that you did. So Katia, were you able to come up with the answer for Mr. Jimenez?
Thank you, Chair Arnold. I just actually would like to ask for a five-minute recess just to ask a couple of follow-up questions to Commissioner Jimenez, and then we can go ahead and resume, and then I will go ahead and give my opinion on the record.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and take a, it's seven forty-four. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back at seven forty-nine.
And Commissioner Jimenez, I'll go ahead and contact you right now.
Okay.
This is Chairman Arnold. I have it at seven forty-nine. Katia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I actually was not able to communicate, so if you just give me like a few more minutes to actually speak with him, I unfortunately didn't have his telephone number. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get that.
Okay, so you can just come back when you're ready.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Chair Arnold?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm back. Just want to make sure everyone's back as, as well and wanted to stay for the record that there is no, I see no conflict and so no need to recuse himself.
All right, so we'll continue with the public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this time?
Commissioner Arnold, this is Commissioner Rounds. I just have a, a question.
Sure.
Yeah, Chad, you had mentioned about the, the parking, the garages, and I think that's the biggest issue here is the parking, because there's absolutely zero on-street parking in front of the complex, the proposed complex. And if there were any overflow parking issues, they would either go into Lake Center Park Lane or they would go across the street into the residential area, because there's already an overflow parking from the the townhomes, apartments across, directly across the street. So I know at the villages to the east of your complex, the, there is a requirement that each person has to park their vehicles in the, in their garages, and if not, they have to show just cause why. And they even go as far as measuring the, the cars, the driveway, the, the garages, everything. And you had mentioned this, is this something that the Homeowners Association would be able to implement?
Well, to answer your question, am I, am I able to be heard?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this Zoom thing is always interesting to me, so I just, I just wanted to check. But yes, so CCNRs, as you may or may not know, CCNRs are a civil code requirement that is recorded on the operations of the quote-unquote Homer's Association and the entity that is formed to manage, own and operate the, the community project itself in common interests. And the board, the board will be made up of individual homeowners and they'll have a president, a secretary, a treasurer, and there's either three or four board members. However, the CCNRs are a legally binding document that in the way that the condition of approval that's been recommended by staff on this would require that the language be contained in the CCNRs that would restrict the ability for anything other than parking of vehicles inside of the garage. And that would be able to be enforced, A, by the Homer's Association, B, the city could get involved, although it's somewhat different because civil matters with CC, CCNRs are typically civil manners, but there would be enforcement allegation or appropriations and fines that could be levied by the association on to that individual property owner, should they not adhere to that requirement of having their garage open for the parking of two vehicles at any and all times.
Okay, so that's something that the board would have to come up with.
Well, the board, excuse me, the board would have to enforce, they will be, the, the laws would be written already, much like a municipal code. That they would, it would be a CCNR code, so to speak, applicable to that site. Additionally, the thirty-four open parking spaces that we are, that we've incorporated into the project, they are not reserved. They are open for the free flow of the, of any, of any residents. They're not tied to any particular unit. They're not tied to others. And when you start to have a larger area of parking like that, you, and the comings and goings of fifty-four families on any given day, there is an ebb and flow that you, and the comings and goings of fifty-four families on any given day, there is an ebb and flow that occurs with that. I think, and, and the demographics for this project are primarily made for young starter families. So I don't think you're going to end up with the large, mature teens living with their parents in this community, you know, with, with the availability of four, five, six cars like you might have in some of the older, single-family home neighborhoods.
Okay, and I would highly recommend if this project is approved, that they, that they question, they, they take some lead from the villages over there because they have been very successful in implementing and, and maintaining the rules to the property there. They've been very, very successful. In fact, they have one fairly big area that there's no overnight parking. You know, and if, if you park there and you wake up in the morning, your car might be gone. But I just wanted to throw that out.
No, no, I appreciate that. And I, if, 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 if this commission and eventually city council is willing to approve this project, I would be interested to learn who the management company is that is being utilized at the villages because that could be very helpful. The one thing I would caution about is if they are using permit parking only and charging for that, that oftentimes drives residents out of the community so that they avoid having to pay for a parking permit or something. That then forces them out into the community and that's something that we don't want.
Sure, sure.
So thank you. Thank you for your question and we will follow up on that.
Thank you, Chad.
Do you have another question, Bill?
No, I don't, Ken. Thank you.
So do the other commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Vice Chairman Hernandez, no question, no question.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
No question. Everything was pretty much self-explanatory. Very satisfying.
Okay, and Ms. Carvajal?
No questions. Thank you, Chairperson.
Okay, and I don't have any questions for the applicant at this time. So we're going to continue with the audience. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, you can use the raised hand function. And and then please, when you're called, please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the planning commission. Also note that there is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Planning Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number seven?
Actually, I do have three raised hands and I did receive a comment via email this afternoon after the twelve PM deadline, which Wayne already mentioned that we presented to everyone present. And that comment did come from Mr. and Mrs. Irma Hutran, Alejandro Hutran, who also has her hand raised and is the first speakers of the evening.
Okay, so will the first speaker state your name and your city of residence and address the planning commission?
Hi, good evening, Chair Ken Arnold and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'd like to begin by backtracking to how we got to this point, basically. This project, had we not gotten involved to the point that we have now, this project would have been approved under the previous plan that was presented to the commission. And I want to thank you for continuing this item to today because as a result of your continuance, I believe that we see all of these modifications and these changes that Malia Home has presented in our planning department as well, that Mr., our Director of Planning has spent an hour and fifteen minutes with about ten times more powers, presentation slides than the general plan commission that we just saw. So very impressive. However, had we not raised concern about this project, I believe that this would have been voted on and, and approved the way it was simply because our planning commission department has presented it to you guys the way it was. We do acknowledge the changes that were made, but the concern is that to the, to the typical resident of City Santa Fe Springs, they're not able to speak up to challenge these decisions. My wife is a city planner by trade. She has twenty-two years' experience. She has a bachelor's and a master's in planning, in planning, city planning. She has experience working with a city of multiple cities, multiple counties, most recently within Orange County. And the, the information that she brings to the table is based on her experience. For every one of those levels, now she's currently she is the director, assistant director of planning in the city that she works in. She has had to apply and interview for each one of those positions and brings the knowledge to the City Santa Fe Springs. It is impossible, impossible to address everything that's going on in three minutes, which I'm about to run out of time. We don't get a chance to make a power presentation to you, which is simply get three minutes. That is just not right. I've lived in the City Santa Fe Springs for forty-two years. I am proud to say that I live in the City Santa Fe Springs, but it is very, very disappointing to see how our city planning department basically advocates for a planning for a developer rather than a resident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Will the next speaker state your name and city of residence?
Hi, my name is Irma Wietron. I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs. I've met you before. Good evening, Chair Arnold and members of the commission. I thank you for your time and for your consideration today and for your very intentional deliberation that will take place tonight. As my husband said, I don't have an hour and a half to present. I don't have a PowerPoint. I have two minutes and thirty-five seconds left. But I'll tell you that the job of a planning commissioner is not easy. And the decision before you is a decision for you to deliberate in front of the public, which is what's happening right now via Zoom. The many facts that we've put forward have been brought, brought to you at previous meetings by us. You've received our correspondence today related to the general plan designation. All the details of the development are moot point. Really, the test before you is whether or not the general plan designation should change for this property. The general plan is in a draft form for the citywide and this parcel has not been changed. That is a fact. The fact is that before you is whether or not the general plan should be changed from medium, from public facilities to medium-density residential. If that does not pass, all the other facts of the project are a moot point. They don't need to be considered. We ask for you today to oppose the general plan designation for all the reasons that you've heard before that I won't repeat myself and waste my time, my three minutes. The conditions, amendments, if the commission were to decide to move forward with this project and recommend to the city council that it moved forward, then the comments that I have before you, the ten-page document should not be ignored. Not, there are over twenty corrections that have been presented to you that are very valid and should not be ignored. There are a couple that I will highlight due to my limitation on time. Staff changes over time, staff retire, staff leaves to work at other cities. We all have left our jobs. So we cannot rely on the history and knowledge of a single or multiple people to remember what happened. That's why you have conditions of approval. I ask that you not ignore the red lines and the track changes that I have presented for your consideration, specifically condition number six, which memorializes that this project will provide two-point-six-three parking sites, parking stalls per unit. That, if that is not memorialized in the condition of approval, the staff report doesn't stand. A city attorney can tell you that. The other, the other item is it's been said many times that this is not a gated community. That's fine. It's not gated. Put it in the conditions of approval. That's condition number fifty-five that I've presented before you for your deliberation. And last but not least, I will highlight because there are too many, is that Mr. Chad Brown has indicated that the guest parking stalls will not be used for other purposes. Condition number one oh two is also something that you should consider along with conditions one oh six and one oh seven, which states that units should be limited to two stories. Those revisions are consistent with the staff report and those should be included along with all the others. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Chair Arnold, I have Marla Velazquez.
Okay. Ms. Velazquez, go ahead. Ms. Velazquez, can you hear me?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marla Velazquez and I reside here on Lake Center Park Lane, been here for twenty-four years. But I've also resided here in the city over thirty. My parents grew up here, went to elementary school, junior high, and high school. My four children, same thing, and now my grandchildren are attending. First of all, my thing was I know that we had said the privacy was one of the issues, you know, but my biggest issue has been really the traffic here. You know, when we came here twenty-four years ago, the traffic wasn't that bad. Of course, nobody has control over that situation. But with the Malia project coming in, you're going to be creating more traffic. So I don't see how people are saying that there isn't going to be more because there is going to be more. You know, we had a death in the city on December thirtieth, you know, like six forty-five in the morning, right before the holidays. And that's just one death that's happened in the city because of traffic accidents. You know, and that is my biggest concern because we've had a lot of residents here in the Lake Center Park Lane here where their cars, they've gotten into accidents coming in and out, even with the signal being put in, it's still taking place. One of my other points was, I know that you mentioned, I guess, that the school just would be getting fees. And to me, I feel like the fees is not really so much important because I feel like as a parent and a grandparent, we put out money for our children's education and to buy supplies for these schools in the school district. My concern is you're going to have these classrooms more crowded. And now, yeah, are you gonna, where's the space to put in more buildings or bungalows and then bring in more teachers? I mean, is that going to take place? Because I don't hear anything about that being said. My concern is the education of my granddaughters. That's the biggest concern right now because I think that should be everybody's main concern. And another thing that I also, you know, wanted to point out was you saying adding the fourteen more parking to this project, this is not going to solve all the problems. You're still going to have the overflow. Like it was mentioned, there's no parking on Florence Avenue on our side. So, and putting a median, that's not going to help either. You know, and like I said from the beginning, I feel okay with a single-family home, homes going there, but you know, I, and I just don't agree to this project for so many reasons, but like has Irma and Alex have explained, we haven't been given the time. Like they said, we're only given three minutes. Whereas to, you have your planning commission department, you're given an hour and fifteen minutes. And then what, ten minutes to, five minutes to put us on recess and another five minutes for whatever else that you guys need to take care of. I just really feel that our planning commission department, maybe not all of you, but I know some of you don't live in our city. So it kind of just, kind of rubs me the wrong way when I feel that you're trying to make a decision based on the city here and the residents of the city when you don't live in our city. I don't feel that it's in the best interest of us. I feel that it's in the best interest of other people and other people's pockets. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter?
Yes, Chair Arnold, excuse me, I do have the hand raised for the next speaker that goes by the initials EMS.
Okay, so would that person please state your name?
Yes, my name is Emma and I'm going to go quickly because I, this is my first time coming to this meeting and I just wanted to share, you know, based on this meeting, I've got a few comments. One of them is that, you know, I, I did hear Mr. Chad Brown say that, you know, in order to, to, you know, work in this community as a developer, you know, we should listen to our city planner, Mr. Wayne Morrell, because we must have, we should have confidence in him. But this is my very first time and I got to tell you that when I was listening to Mr. Morrell, I was feeling like I was hearing an advocate for the developer for, for Malia Homes. And that tells me a lot about, you know, I, I think that, that the, the director of the city, of the city planning department should be advocate for the community, advocate for the residents. And with that, I, I ask a few questions. One of them is, is the city getting any public benefits? It, it, has that been negotiated? And if that has not been negotiated, why not? Because that is should be part of the director's, you know, ability to know and to recommend, you know, some public benefits. And by public, public benefits, I'm, I'm talking about like Quimby Park fees or some kind of other things like parks and open space, historic preservation, childcare facilities, any kind of community facilities, something, because usually that is what happens. And I didn't hear anything about this. So in combination, I'm feeling like we really need to listen to us residents. I really need you to look at those recommendations and really kind of take the perspective of why is our city, the director of, of our, of our planning department advocating for the developer? Because it's really coming across like that. I'm telling you, this is the first time I listened to this and the entire time I thought, why is he repeating everything three, four times in one session and then did it again for the next half hour? And again, for the, I was just not understanding this. I feel like at this point, what was really important is to look at what is, how is this going to have an impact on the future of the community? Maybe single-family homes are not the right thing right now. I'm not, I'm, you know, I prefer that. I think we should look at our community and make sure that in twenty years, thirty years, fifty years, we have the community that is best for us. You guys cited all these different communities or developments that were done back in the eighties, back in the nineties. Well, today, we're not then. So those were maybe bad decisions, maybe there were good decisions for that moment. Today, I want you to look at public benefits. I want you to look at those recommendations and then consider what do we want for a community for the future? Because that, that is what we are doing today. You're making decisions about the future, not what happened in the past, but about the future and advocate for the residents, advocate for our community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this matter?
Yes, Chair Arnold, I have the following person going under the name Zoom user.
Okay, would you please state your name and city of residence for the record, please?
Hello, good evening. My name is Norma Hernandez and I live in the city of Santa Fe Springs on Fallen Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Chair Arnold and Planning Commission. Once again, my name is Norma Hernandez of Santa Fe Springs. I'd like to express my continual concern with the project there by Malia Homes, Florence Avenue Townhome Project. Frankly, you know, once again, we're here, I'm saddened to see that our city planning department has the opportunity to build single-family residents or at the very least, you know, less dense a community. But as previously mentioned, I, I just, I'm continuously disappointed, to say the very least, and my confidence has been diminished greatly with regards to Mr. Wayne Morrell. I, I continuously feel like he has spent a lot of time and made a lot of accommodations to speak to the developer and he's advocating consistently. Whereas, you know, I don't feel the same has been towards the residents. Here we have an opportunity to, to build homes and communities, but we consistently see the last several developments as mentioned. Their apartment style, they're very dense with no parking. I ask all of you, is this what we have to look forward to for the next ten years? Is this the best that we can do? Is this all that can be done? Bottom line, will we ever see single-family residents or lower-density homes? Or will we just follow the pack? Kind of like with Mr. Wayne Morrell is saying, everyone else is. Or will we just follow the pack? Um, kind of like with Mr. Wayne Maud is, is saying everyone else is doing it. Um, I requested a meeting with the city and the developer and I was encouraged uh by speaking to Mr. Wayne Morrell and also the city manager. Um, and I was told that it was going to happen. However, when I read the comments in the city response at the. Um, in the agenda, it states there that the uh, the developer uh agreed to meet with the residents. And again, I did not request a meeting with the developer. I requested to meet with the city and the developer. Or at least the city, however, I did not get that and I want to make sure that that is known. That I never did get that, although I did, uh, I was promised numerous times that that would happen. And in lieu, I got a meeting with the developer. I did uh take a moment to speak with Mr. Chad Brown and I advised him that he did not have the authority. Uh, to make changes as the city did, the city, the, the city uh planning director. I'm concerned, um, as I've read the job descriptions of many planning directors. I think it's very clear that part of their job is to speak to the residents. And also uh ensure that we are okay, that the, that the residents are okay, but I don't think he's made the time to do so. And moreover, um, you know, the Quinby Act has been uh around for many years. I was looking to the last update was in twenty thirteen. We've had several years to uh implement that in our city and I'm disappointed with Mr. Wayne Morrell being unfamiliar. Or not prepared to uh obtain those fees from the developer. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I muted myself. Uh, is there anyone else uh wanting to speak on this matter?
Yes, Chair Arnold, we have Leilani.
Okay, Leilani, could you uh give us your last name also and your city of uh residence?
Hi, my name is Leilani Martinez and I'm a resident in the city of Santa Fe Springs and I just wanted to. Speak on everything that was presented to us today. Um, it's been about two hours of information and. I just really think that a lot of things were repeated that were unnecessary, but. Point is, is that this shouldn't be taking place and. We keep touching on, we need to be like Whittier and surrounding communities that are taking, uh, participating in. High occupancy homes and the whole point of living here is because we don't have that yet. And although there are a few communities, they have their parking, they have the, it's, it's not common in our area. And we're bringing so, we would, the city wants to bring so many people into our city and we don't have. The infrastructure for that. You want to put in a median, that means construction, we've already been dealing with. Years of construction for the five freeway entrance and how much dust and pollution has that brought to our city? And we don't even live as close to the entrance as across the street. Um, I just think that a lot of time was wasted here today with a lot of. Really unnecessary information and that's an hour and thirty minutes that I will not get back. Um. We need to think about the future as was stated by other residents and we need to think about being. Here for the long run because if we're just going to be like Whittier and Alhambra and. Go so many cities and the people that are supposed to be working for our city that are supposed to be here. With our best interests in mind that they don't even live in the city and they're out here advocating for the developer. What are we even doing here today? I think we need to revisit the job descriptions of those said persons. And, and maybe even start rehiring because I, I don't know what we're doing here today. If, if the people we're supposed to put our trust in are not looking out for us and. The rest of our lives because they get to go home to Alhambra and Whittier and. All of these other places and they don't get to stay here and deal with. The repercussions of this building. And yes, I understand that nine units, but what about the rest of them? There's still thirty-two. I would have much rather just have. A nice little neighborhood of single family homes. And that have that be that because again, there's already, I think, two people were hit by trucks right there on Pioneer. And I think that that's just unacceptable and it's a problem that won't go away by adding more people and more cars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
My apologies. Yes, Mara Siceros.
Was that again?
Yes, my name is Mara Siceros and I live in Rancho Santa Fe here on Pioneer. And while I appreciate all the changes made by uh Malia Home um group. I am really upset by how Mr. Wayne has been supposedly representing us. I also feel that he was uh talking in behalf of the developer. We spent more than an hour listening to him. And I actually feel that uh Ms. Irma and her husband are the ones really representing us as the citizens. All these concerns and um, and changes were brought to you, thanks to them, not Mr. Wayne. Um, about the meeting that was held in October, I never really heard of it. Uh, I've been looking out for all these kind of meetings um that were actually postponed over the last months. And that meeting in October, I never heard of it, otherwise I would have been there. I am grateful that they created Ms. Irma and her husband. Um, they created a social media page and um. The, they were collecting signatures. Otherwise, this project would have been approved with the amount of sixty-three units instead of now the fifty-four. Which I appreciate that they're making changes, but what about the place where I live? I will also would like to take in consideration this site uh for privacy. I will also like to have the two-story um townhomes instead of the three stories on my side. Um, and nobody's really taking us in consideration. So again, I just want to be very grateful to Ms. Irma for creating. Uh, ten pages long and I'm grateful that she does this for a living, otherwise um as a citizen. I don't feel represented by Mr. Wayne. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Chair, I don't know. Um, that was our last speaker.
Okay, um, at this time, uh. Uh, if no one else is wishing to speak, I'd like to call in the applicant for a rebuttal. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we close the public hearing, uh, Mr. Brown?
Um, no, I don't, I don't have anything to really offer uh from the standpoint of um a rebuttal. Um, I think that we've been very responsive. And from the standpoint of my job as an applicant and a developer is to. Adhere to the rules and regulations of the city that are part of the municipal code. And that's what we strive to do and I think what we have done here. Um, we are asking for the modification for the front wall location to be within the front setback, but yet further back. Than the existing neighborhood and that's simply for noise and privacy. Uh, protection from Florence Avenue, which as you know, has over fifty thousand trips a day in traffic that occur on it. Um, due to the businesses. I think um, the one thing I will add is that maybe lost in some of this is that some of that traffic that exists today. Could potentially be diminished. Yes, a project is going to add incrementally an amount of traffic uh to the daily mix. But what is potentially being mixed or lost in that is that. These fifty-four homes would offer a place for some of these workers um employment. Uh, from, to the employment center um to not be. Transposing through the city but would have a place to call home in the city and could reside there. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions if I've left things out that you would like me to respond to. Um, but I believe that the plans, uh, the staff report, uh, the resolution and what uh have, and, and my request. Um, with this project that has been very responsive um can stand for itself and I, I, I do ask you for your approval of this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, do any, uh, at, at this time, uh, all the speakers have done speaking, I'd like to close the public hearing. And do the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? So um, uh, let's just go by um. The roll call, Commissioner Carver Hall, do you have any comments or, or questions regarding uh this uh project?
Uh, no, sir. I've taken my notes and listened on everything. I'm fine at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes. As a commissioner, it, it's hard to keep aside our personal feelings and stuff, but as you know, we have to. Um. We had a lot of information given over months and months. Um, there are factors we have to factor in, which are from the state, the federal. Okay, our residents, um, the future of Santa Fe Springs. I, I, it's, it's a, it's not a win-win for anybody, but it's as close as I think that could be. Um. Sometimes, you know, we just have to live with some of the changes that comes. Um, I think everybody, you know, there's always. Room for improvement on communication, on, on presentations, on. Forethought considerations and stuff. Uh, you know, I, I think, I think everybody did a diligent job. Um, for the residents, from our planning commission, um, from the developer. I, it, it's just the facts are facts and um, you know, we, we have to deal with a lot of elements and stuff and that's. We need to be considered also in the mix. That's I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Rounds.
Thank you, Ken. Well, this is a tough one. It really is, is uh Commissioner Hernandez just stated that, you know, I look at this project. And it's a beautiful uh complex. Um, I'm really pleased to see the developer has listened to the residents. Reduced it from sixty-three to fifty-four units, increase the parking. But then I look at something else, the state Rena requirement versus best interest of the city. Is it a need versus a want? And you also have, yes, it's permitted and there, by theory, but then there's also reality. Um, it's a, you know, I hate to see a site. Left vacant for almost three years and it could be developed. So um, a lot of information and like Commissioner Hernandez stated, you know, there is the, the law that we have to go by. But then I look at the state, they don't live in Santa Fe Springs, we do. The state requires a lot of things that we've always disagreed with, but we normally we abide by them, so. Um, yeah, it's, it's a very hard decision.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Jimenez, do you have any comments on this matter?
Oh, I just want to um. Thank the residents for coming out and giving their input and uh just let them all know that we'll take. Their thoughts into consideration and what they presented to us and thank you all.
Thank you, sir, and I would just like to have a few comments regarding this. Um, I remember when the site where the nineteen houses are. Were a uh, an old apartment house. Apartment buildings and it was all rundown and, and there was a lot of drug dealing going on in there and. The city got together and said, we got to get rid of this uh situation there. And they, they bought the property from the owner. They, they took down the apartments and they built those nineteen houses. And gave them uh the opportunity of people that lived in Santa Fe Springs that had low income to be able to buy those houses. And uh, that was in the nineteen eighties. And now uh, this project is going next door. Like uh, the applicant stated and like uh, uh, Mr. Morrell stated. The opportunities to be able to build single family houses is very limited nowadays. Due to the amount of land that it takes to be able to, to do that. Um, and with the state uh requiring us to build more and more housing. Uh, it has uh really put a lot of pressure on cities to, to develop uh new housing projects. And one of the biggest things that are going on right now. Is the state has mandated as of January the first. That all single family residential properties can be now converted into nine, into four separate units. Uh, without parking. Uh, so that nineteen unit uh units that are to the west of the project. Could actually be uh converted into ninety-six separate units. And they could be done by eliminating the garages and just having parking on the driveways. Uh, they could have the original unit. Uh, they could have a junior ADU, which is about a hundred and fifty square feet of the existing house plus an addition. Of up to about two hundred square feet. Plus, they can convert the garages into a unit and then build a separate unit. In the, in the, uh, the rest of the property. And the state has mandated that the cities cannot restrict the uh, the cities cannot restrict that. So every house in the city of Santa Fe Springs in a single family area can do this. Uh, by, by utilizing this uh facility. Uh, the garages cannot be converted into, uh, because they won't have enough place, uh, there's no additional yard space. To be able to do anything as far as the adding uh more, more parking area. Um, I think one of the largest problems that we have in this project is the communication. Uh, I know that the applicant tried to, to have a meeting with the uh, with the neighbors. Yeah, in the neighborhood and uh, only one person showed up. I think a lot of the problems could have been solved and we could have had this project completed and done with. In November, if people were just came together and talked to each other. And uh, I, I wanted to come to the side of Mr. Morrell. Uh, he cannot make law. Uh, the only people that can make law in the city is the city council. And they're limited on what laws they can make by the state. And the state laws are limited about what the federal government would require us to do. So having uh one person in the planning department to be able to say, I don't like this law, so I'm not going to. Uh, enforce it, you're putting a lot of um. Extra pressure on, on that gentleman to do it. And I think uh, Mr. Morrell has done an exemplary job of trying to explain. All of these requirements and it's not the things that he brought up there. He wasn't trying to, to um. Uh, uphold the applicant, he was just stating the law. The laws that he has to abide by. So um, I think if the residents of the area would have gotten together. With the applicant, you could have worked this out a lot sooner and we would have been uh done with it. So um, at this point, uh, I'm going to ask if there's a motion and a second for item number seven. If there isn't anybody else, I will make the motion to uh, uh. Move uh, item number seven, uh, including the uh requirements for the uh. Sequo adoption of mitigated negative declaration, the general plan amendment. Case number thirty-one, the zone change case number one forty, the tentative tract map number eighty-three, eight. Uh, eight, three, three, eight, three, the development plan approval, DPA case. eight-three-three-eight-three, the development plan approval, DPA case, uh, nine-eight-two, and the modification permit case number thirteen forty. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Jimenez, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Secretary, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair Arnold. Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
I'm so sorry I didn't catch that.
Aye.
Perfect. Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carver Hall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Arnold?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Okay, so ordered. With the planning, uh, Commission Attorney, Kathy Ferlich, please, uh, read your statement.
Yes, thank you, Chair Arnold. The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're gonna move to item number eight. We have a public hearing. Categorical exemption, CEQA guideline section one-five-three-oh-one, class one, and section one-five-three-oh-two, class two, conditional use permit case six-five-eight-dash-one. I'd like to call on Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number eight.
Uh, geez, and Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Wayne, this will stop all. Hold on, let me share my screen. Uh, can you see the presentation?
About to, it says yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's there.
So, spare of me, I not. Okay, there it is, okay. I'm not too familiar with the new version of PowerPoint, so, um, item number eight, conditional use permit case number six-five-eight-dash-one. The request is for a reconsideration of the conditional use permit six-five-eight to allow the continuous operation and maintenance of a fifty-five-foot-high wireless telecommunications facility stealth as a monopalm and related improvement at one-three-nine-one-seven stage row in the M-two-heavy manufacturing zone. Uh, the subject property has the address of one-three-nine-one-seven stage row, uh, currently zoned as, uh, M-two-heavy manufacturing. The facility owner is AT&amp;T Wireless and the location of the property is located between Rosecran Avenue and Stage Row. The facility itself is located at the northwest corner of the property, uh, which is a a minimum of a hundred feet away from the stage row. Little background, um, the mono, uh, monopalm, sorry for that, uh, was first approved, uh, by conditional use permit, uh, in March two thousand and nine. The subject CUP is being reconsidered, considered because it has been more than ten years since the original approval was granted. The project description, in addition to the reconsideration, the applicant is also proposing to modify the existing wireless telecommunications facility and the related equipment. Here are the list of antenna that will be replaced and installed as part of this reconsideration. In addition to that, there are some ground-level equipment that will be installed and being swapped out, uh, as part of the upgrade. Uh, it should be noted, the monopalm will remain at the same height and the lease area will also remain the same. Here's a site plan. Um, the left side is the existing, uh, site plan for the monopalm. The right, that's highlighted in yellow, are the antenna that will be replaced or being added as part of this reconsideration. Here's the self-elevation. As you can see, um, the, the highlighted yellow are the antenna being replaced and installed. Uh, the location of the antenna, uh, relatively stayed the same and there's no increase in heights for the monopalm or the, uh, height of the antenna. Here's another elevation from, uh, the north and you can see the highlighted yellow are the antenna being replaced and installed. Uh, on the left side is a photo that was taken in two thousand and nineteen. Um, as part of the reconsideration, staff has, uh, required the applicant to install additional front and paint the antenna into a newer green, so it doesn't look as outdated. Um, the photo on the right side is what is currently on site. As you can see, the antenna and the new front plant in closely to the two real palm tree to the left and right. As part of CEQA, uh, staff have determined that, uh, this proposed project is category exempt from CEQA, uh, subject to section one-five-three-oh-one, class one, as existing facility and section one-five-three-oh-two, class two, for replacement and reconstruction. The proposed requirement simply involves a consideration to extend the permit of existing facility and the replacement of existing outdated equipment and, and to provide more advanced equipment. A public hearing notice was posted on City Hall Library Kiosk and Mail out to five hundred feet radius on December twenty-eighth and was posted on Video Day News on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We did not, staff have not received any comment related to this project as of today. Uh, consideration, uh, for the commissioner that the proposed monopalm will not be detrimental to person or property in the immediate facility and will not adversely affect the city in general. Uh, if the applicant operate in strict compliance with the condition approval, the wireless telecommunications facility will continue to be harmonious with adjourning property and surrounding land use. And the facility is set back and locate, location of the related equipment are since stealth, so it will not impact the general appearance of the community. Staff is recommended that, uh, the project find it determined to be exempt from CEQA per section one-five-three-oh-one, class one, and section one-five-three-oh-two, class two. Also approved conditional use permit case number six-five-eight-dash-one, subject to the condition stay within the attached resolution and a dot resolution number two-oh-one-dash-two thousand and twenty-two, which incorporate the planning commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation. You have any question? I'm here to answer. And I believe the African are still here. I will need to look at the pen.
Okay, is there, uh, any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
No questions, sir.
No questions.
No questions.
I don't have any questions. The public hearing is now open. I'd like to call upon the applicant if they wish to speak to please use the raised hand function at this time.
Chair, you have Stella?
Okay, so would you please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the planning commission?
Hi, um, good evening. My name is Stella. I'm representing AT&amp;T for this application. I just would like to thank the staff for, um, oh, sorry.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, uh, last name is S-H-I-H-G. And, uh, um, just want to thank the staff for, uh, helping us through this process. Uh, it has been a long process because we need to, uh, install additional front floors to, uh, provide a, uh, more camouflage look of the, uh, palm tree. Um, staff has been really helpful and, uh, giving us guidelines, so I just want to, um, thank them for that and I'm here to answer any questions if, um, any commissions have.
The commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Rounds has been.
Vice Chair Jimenez, no questions.
Commissioner Carver Hall, no questions.
Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, Chair Arnold, no questions.
Okay, I, I have no questions. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raised hand function.
Chair Arnold, I have no one else.
Okay. Was there any, uh, uh, Madam Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email, uh, for item number eight?
Not for this project, sir.
Okay, see, no one else is wishing to speak. I'd like to call the applicant for the, oh, there's no rebuttal because there's no speaker, so. You, uh, do you have anything to, uh, say before we, uh, close the public hearing? Applicant?
Uh, no, no. Um, I just, I think the staff did a really good job presenting and this is, uh, pretty straightforward project, um, which is asking for, continue to operate this, um, facility and, um, with additional, um, update on the equipments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing. Do the commissioners have any, uh, comments regarding this matter? Hearing no comments. Is there a motion and a second for item number eight?
Commissioner Rounds will move the item.
Commissioner Carver Hall, second.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Definitely. Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carver Hall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Person Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Arnold?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Okay, so ordered. Uh, Planning Commission Attorney Kathy Ferlich, would you please read your, uh, statement?
Sure, thank you, Chair Arnold. The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, item number nine, consent items. Consent items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and a roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the planning commission. We have, uh, three items on the consent, uh, agenda. Item number nine, uh, uh, see, uh, unless one of the commissioners like to have the planners have permit an item for further discussion. Is there a motion and a second for approval of item nine A, nine B, and nine C?
Commissioner Carver Hall, move consent agenda.
I have a motion.
Commissioner Rounds will second.
I have a second. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Definitely. Chair, Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carver Hall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Arnold?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
So ordered. Uh, item number ten, announcements. Uh, are there any, uh, commissioners that have an announcement they'd like to, to, uh, share?
I'll, I'll share, um. First of all, I wanna say happy New Years to everyone. I'm glad to see all of you here today and, uh, Ken, it's a, a breath of fresh air to have you back. You did an awesome job and, uh, your knowledge is just so incredible and thank you for everything, Ken. And it's really good to have you back.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Carver Hall, I have an announcement.
Okay.
Just want to, um, advise or remind people tomorrow is our safe neighborhood meeting, uh, at six-thirty via Zoom. If anybody has not got the link, please call the police service center, speak with staff or Daryl and it's, uh, a great uh, time to find out about the city and how we're going, uh, of course, safe neighborhood-wise. And then again, just to reiterate, I'm glad that everybody, I'm hoping had a great New Year and Ken, it's great to have you back. Just reiterating what Gabriel said, your knowledge is immense and I thank you for all your help that you've done and given me. And to the rest of the commissioners, have a great rest of your month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, sure. I just want to piggyback with the colleagues and say it's, it's great to have you back. And, uh, everybody else does well during this month.
Thank you, Johnny. Bill?
Yes, uh, welcome back, Ken. Uh, you picked one heck of a meeting to come back into, but, uh, hey, that's why we're here. That's why we're here. Make the tough decisions, make the right decisions.
Yeah, I, I, I think we made the right decision on this project.
And Francis, uh, I will enjoy the rest of my month, uh, but I believe we have another meeting, uh, this month, don't we?
Yeah, we do. I think I spoke too soon.
Yeah, some memories still here somewhere.
Right, there you go.
Anyway, happy New Year, everyone, and Kathy, I'm glad you got through this, um, uh, good job there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Kathy, I, I, you know, with the meetings that we had and with the, uh, the meeting before this and being able to go through it with you, uh, made it a lot easier for the, the rest of us, I think. Um, and then, uh, I just want to let everybody know that on, um, Wednesday, I have to get another CT scan to check to see if, uh, the tumor has continued to shrink. They did one in October and it shrank from the original one in, in July, the end of July, from a nine-point-something centimeter down to three-point-something. It was about a sixty-six percent decrease in the size of the tumor. And so I finished my last round of chemo at the end of, uh, December. And, uh, now they're looking to see if they can get me onto a, uh, a clinical trial. That'll, uh, if I can do that, uh, they say that I might have a, a chance to stick around and, and bother all you guys for a little while longer, so I really appreciate that. So, uh, I love all you guys. I, I, I treasure your prayers and your thoughts and comments and, uh, have a, a great rest of your, uh, next couple of weeks before we have our next commission meeting and, uh, thank you so much for all your help. Uh, is there any from the staff?
Wayne, I was gonna offer Wayne something. Wayne, um, if you want me to go to, uh, CVS and maybe pick up some throat lozenges for you?
No, it's okay. It's all right. I'll be okay. Thank you, though. I appreciate the concern. I was drinking water in between. It was just a lot of information to go through.
Yeah, I, I thought you did a great job, Wayne. Uh, you know, people don't appreciate everything that you do. Uh, I think, uh, even some of the city council don't appreciate all that you're doing. And, and, um, I remember the last one we had like this was about that, uh, trash hauling facility over there on Norwalk Boulevard. We had all those people from, uh, the surrounding neighborhoods that were complaining about it, complaining about it. Now it's up and running. It looks beautiful. There's no, every time I go by there, I can't smell a thing. And, uh, I think this project's gonna end up being the same way. Once it's built, everybody's gonna love it. So, anybody, any other staff have anything to say?
I'm, I was saying, one hand is raised.
Hi, everyone. Um, you may not recognize me because I'm actually, um, playing IT tonight. But I, I did want to share with not just the commission, but the members of the public that are still present that, um, we do have a special study session early tomorrow morning at nine AM. Um, we do have a special study session early tomorrow morning at nine AM. Um, to basically kind of try to, uh, facilitate open dialogue, listen to, um. The comments and concerns from the, the community. Uh, with regards to the general plan, so hopefully we can bring forward to you on. Uh, January twenty-fourth, the general plan that, that, you know, uh, you all can support. So with that, that's, that's all I have to say.
Hey, thanks, uh, anybody else?
Actually, um, I just wanted to remind everybody, thank you, we do have another meeting on January twenty-fourth, I will be sending out your agendas and everything shortly, um, within the next week. I am also, I wanna wish, um, Commissioner Hernandez a happy birthday, since his birthday is actually the twenty-fourth. Um, yes. So, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Johnny.
Happy birthday, Johnny.
Happy birthday.
Let's do it for Johnny.
This is January twenty-fourth.
Happy birthday.
Estas son las mañanitas, okay, that's about it.
That's great, thank you.
Well, then sing for me too, cause mine's the twenty-third.
Back to back. That's why you, that's why you brought up Johnny's birthday.
No.
Nah, I'm joking, happy birthday to her.
IT, we're back to back, uh, one, two.
Yes, my follow clarion.
You got it. Thank you.
So if there's no other announcements from staff, uh. Let's go adjournment at, uh, eight-fifty-eight PM, we got it in before three hours, so.
Nice.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, John Boy.